June meeting of the Kaneohe Neighborhood Board. It is 6:30 and this meeting is called to order. Our first order of business is to fill vacancies on the board. And we have two vacancies, one in Sub District Two, which is the Windward Mall area, and another in Sub District Seven, Oahu. If there's anyone here that's interested in serving on the board who is from those areas, this would be a good time to step forward. Anybody on the TV? Hearing none, we will move on to the City and State Monthly Reports. First up is the Honolulu Fire Department. And if they're not ready to present, it's great that we have Major Paiva here and representing our Moku. So please. Okay, is it okay just to introduce you? Or did you have something that you wanted to say? Okay, say hi.
The new major for the town.
Great, thank you. All right, so we have an HPD report.
Yes, good evening, sir. I'm Officer Jerry Atkins with District Four Community Policing Team. And yes, that's our commander for the district in person, Major Paiva. So the stats for May 2024 for Kaneohe follows. For motor vehicle thefts, there was one in May versus five the previous month. There were three burglaries in May versus two the previous month. There were nine thefts in May versus 24 the previous month. There were two U M Vs or car break-ins in May versus eight the previous month. And there were two robberies in May versus zero the previous month. And then versus the stats last year, there was four less car thefts this year. There was one less burglary this year. There were five less thefts this year. There were six less car break-ins this year. And the only thing that increased this year was the robberies to two. That's all I have for the stats. So can take any questions or concerns.
Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? I see two hands. And anybody from the TV? All right, we'll go with Mr. Sakamoto.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Officer Atkins. I sent the email to Major Paiva requesting for some information about the H3. There is incidents on June 2nd, 6th, June 8th and June 9th speeding early in the morning on the weekends, Saturdays and Sundays. Do you have any updates on that? And then I also sent her information about how many citations for people with no license, no insurance, no registration, and how many DUIs were done in the month of May for the Memorial Day weekend. Appreciate it, thank you.
Um, yes, so, um, what with our new major coming to the district, she asked our officers to kind of put together a list of projects that they thought would help increase the community. So one of the projects was enforcement on the H3. So the enforcement has increased. I don't have the exact number for the entire H3 for the month of May, but I know just today that one person was arrested on the H3 for excessive speeding. There were two citations given out for excessive speeding, also one citation given out for reckless driving. And then as far as those stats you're talking about, if the if the board wanted those stats, those were, I think you requested a bunch of stats about driving without a license. So there was 23 citations issued in May for that. There was 42 citations issued for no vehicle insurance in May. There was 238 expired vehicle tax citations issued in May, 250 expired safety checks issued in May, and there were seven DUIs over the Memorial Day weekend.
I appreciate that because I have a cousin that was in a rear end collision accident on the H3. And she was so distraught, she didn't call 911 on right away. She totally reported to District Four. And the person did not have a legal license. He only had a driver's permit. This is his second offense. I'm kind of concerned about people driving with either not proper license or no license at all, getting in the way. Yeah, thank you.
Can I follow up and put back and apologize? I did have Officer Atkins get the statistics for us, but I was gonna just present just to Mr. Sakamoto on the side. It's a lot of statistics that are being asked for. And I know that across the commission of the neighborhood boards, only certain statistics are given so that every board has the same statistics that are given to them. And sometimes it's difficult for us to to try to approve or give statistics that are outside of the norm that have been approved by the commission. In this case, it wasn't very difficult to get the stats. And a lot of the stats that the public can get is on our crime mapping on the internet, on our internet, on HonoluluPD.org. But I just wanted to make sure that in general, stats that are requested outside of the approved statistics by the commission, I would prefer or I would like to have it given to, requested to me at the Neighborhood Board. And then at the next Neighborhood Board, I can look it up because the statistics he's asking for is is perfect. But the problem really is, what is the problem? Like, what is, what does Mr. Sakamoto want to do with those statistics? Because that's really our problem. That's really our problem is our problem is trying to figure out, okay, I think what he's saying is the H3 speeding is pretty bad. And we need to get more people out there. Or there's a certain area in Kaneohe that has more people that are driving without expired tax and expired safety. So those are the issues that I would like to deal with. The statistics that he's being, that is asked for, it's more the problem I'm interested in than just giving you guys stats, but not knowing what you guys really want as far as what is the real problem. And Mr. Sakamoto and I talk and email a lot. So I really do know what his concerns are. But in general, if there's any other statistics you guys would like, I would prefer to have it at the Neighborhood Board so that I can find out what the reason behind that is. And then that way I can come up with a better solution than just giving you stats. You know, I can go out there and deal with the problem and come back with the statistics of the problem versus, and what we did to solve the problem versus just the amount of citations that we gave.
Mr. Sakamoto, did you catch all that?
Yes, I just wanted the data so I can bring up to the legislature so we can get some bills passed to enforce, to help you folks.
And it helps us as well.
Chief Logan said that to me under registration that we need to contact our legislature to make sure that there's bills passed to help you folks enforce.
So are you going to use some of this data for a resolution from our board?
I'll try to do that with the help of.
Because if those are the reasons we want that information, I think that that's what'd be helpful to the major. So the information that we're looking for, we can get and we can use. Correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Major. Thank you, Officer Atkins.
Anyone else for the HPD? All right, is the Fire Department here? Taking care of business, Marine Corps Base of Aie. All right, let's move into Board Briefs. I gotta say that today's meeting is, the agenda is fully packed. And if we get through this, it's going to be a small miracle. So let's do our best. Oahu Pentathlon.
Hi, I'm here. I'm on screen.
Hi.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you and see you. Yes, I can hear you and see you. Tell us about your stuff. Maybe you can't hear us, but we can hear you.
Hello. There we go, okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Mayo. I'm the Race Director for the Waupun Pentathlon. For the third consecutive year that we've presented to this event to the board, or this board, and I just want to review the details, which do largely remain unchanged from years previous. This event in totality is a 135-mile ultra endurance event to circumnavigate the island by swim, run, paddle, stand back. Athletes can either take on the entire course as a solo trek or split it up with a team. And the event serves as a fundraiser for Point One Vision, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The portion of this event that impacts the Kaneohe Neighborhood is a portion of the, is a portion of the run segment. So athletes would enter into Kaneohe Neighborhood via Kaneohe Bay Drive. They are instructed to follow pedestrian laws at all times, including the use of crosswalks. And we'll have volunteer station at a few key points to ensure that they actually follow those rules. As the course continues, it, same fashion as last year, will connect to Highway 630. Then the athletes will turn right again on Kamehameha Highway 830. Then they'll use Haiku Road to cut across the Kahikiili Highway. And then they'll continue northbound until exiting your district. This is the same as last year. The Department of Transportation has deemed that we will not need to impede the flow of traffic or blocking any lanes. So we are not requesting any cones or change of traffic or blocking that off. There's also no parking necessary as athletes are only passing through the district. Any checkpoints are on one end or the other. And again, athletes will be expected to go with the flow of traffic and obey all pedestrian laws. We expect a total of 120 to 150 athletes involved in the event. However, only about 40 of those will actually be running through the district. That's because of the way that they're broken up into teams. And then with the spread and timing of the event and the fact that they will have done a swim prior to this, there won't likely, in the same cases before, be more than a few athletes seen together passing at a time. So that's really the details. I'm open to any questions or concerns of the board or community.
What is the date again, please?
Uh, this is for August 3rd, Saturday.
Forward, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Have fun.
Thanks.
Marine Corps Base of Aie. You will now pop in.
Good evening, Board Members and Community. My apologies, I was speaking with Major Paiva. She actually covers Waimea Nalo all the way down to Kahalu. And of course, we go to all those Neighborhood Board meetings. So we had some things to get over, so my apologies. Couple of things to share with you folks. I would like to start with one item that was very exciting. And I was hoping to get some pictures, but was unable to get them to you to show on the screen. But on June 4th and 5th, we were able to support FestPAC at the Marine Corps Base on Mokapu with the mooring of all of the voyaging canoes. One from Tahiti, one from Cook Islands, and then the Five Sister Canoes, Hokulea, Hikianalia, and the three, Io Seppa from Polynesian Voyaging, Polynesian Cultural Center, and Makali'i, and a few of the other smaller canoes that all came in in support of FestPAC. Nainoa Thompson came to the Marine Corps Base and spoke along with our commander to the community to show, not showcase, but to communicate how we're working together and to support the community. The Ko'olau Poko Hawaiian Civic Club, as well as the Ko'olau Foundation, both were present in full gear in support of both the relationships between the Marine Corps Base and the Ko'olau Poko community. It was really beautiful to see all those canoes tied up on the long view pier. I'll try to get some pictures and send to you, and then maybe we can share them next time. A few other things that are on the positive. We have been tracking our turtle nesting. And there have been several turtle nesting clusters discovered. Our environmental team is following those. And we're anticipating having an opportunity for a few select individuals to come out to observe when they're hatching and their, that whole exciting part. So we're looking forward to be able to give more information on that. It's, you know, it's not a specific date, obviously, but they're, they're watching and it's exciting to hear all of the environmental department just excited about it. Just a few reminders. We do have Waimea Nalo Beach closure in support of BrimPAC training for July 12th through the 15th, and then again on the 25th through the 29th. So there won't be any access to Waimea Nalo Beach Park. As well as you folks know, that the camping portion also was closed for the summer season due to, you know, increase of the HONU and their monitoring of that. Also, I wanted to share with you folks during the ending part of May and the beginning part of June, you may have noticed an increased amount of air traffic and quite a bit of noise. I wanted to share a little bit about that particular training because this is an annual training that will occur during this time of the year, every year. And it's called the Aloha Sentry. One positive thing about, even though we don't like the noise, it flies right over my house, so I hear it myself, is that this is an opportunity for our Hawaii Air National Guard to have access to equipment and training planes that they don't normally have access to. This aircraft come over from the continent and it's accessible to our Hawaii boys so that they can train with this equipment and be better suited and better trained and qualified for when they hopefully never have to use it. That is all I have on my list. I do, I did want to say that for an update in regards to Mr. Sakamoto, your bag usage at the commissary. What they have shared was that when they have used everything that they have in stock and they continuously communicate while people are shopping that to use reusable bags, but that they will be going away soon as all is used. So they're giving the customers the update that one day there won't be any, so be prepared.
Yeah, one day has come. They're out of plastic bags. You have to bring your own bag.
When did that happen? I don't shop there, I'm not allowed.
It happened, it happened when I didn't have bags in my truck.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, didn't listen to the intercom.
Do they sell bags?
You do.
They do sell bags. Any questions for Marine Corps Base of Aie? Mr. Sakamoto?
Yeah, thank you for the update about the bags. I was worried about the plastic. And, you know, I did ask you a question, the Neighborhood Board. I would like to know if you could give an update to our Board Members about the aircraft that crashed in December last year. How's it doing, the coral? Did the investigation go well?
Oh, yes, they continue to actually have divers in the water during the weekends when there's no air traffic. DLNR, Dobar, and DAR work closely with the Marine Corps Base and with our CEO, Colonel Bevan, to give access so that they can continue monitoring the area. They report even to the Kaneohe Bay Regional Council, which Elena Bryant is on, so she can also share. And I know she follows this closely as well. They, they did overturn initially 180 coral heads, and they have all been doing very well. The impact, and the impact luckily was not as bad as it appeared.
Thank you for the report.
Do you have any questions for Marine Corps Base of Aie, Jeff?
Uh, just in regard to the sea turtles, are you aware that when their pattern is disturbed as far as getting blasted by, say, MPs headlights? Or, you know, whatever ongoing security measures that you take to ensure that no one invades us, those lights can sometimes screw up their egg laying. What has been done to ensure that they are able to do so unencumbered or undisturbed?
I will commend our environmental department because they are Nazis when it comes to overseeing our environmental resources to the point where they don't always get along with everybody else on base. They have ensured and have protected and don't let anything near any of the turtle nesting. Even when they are planning to do outreach, it is with great oversight.
Uh, thank you. No, we're good. That's good. I've been out. Lania Kea is on the, that's not on Marine Corps Base, is it? Okay, you made, you made your point. You made your point. That's good. And Christie, you can just pass that along to PMO. Make sure that they don't drive with their Jeeps on the beach in where the HONU are, mahalo. Who? Go ahead, Len.
I guess it pertains to the noise as well. You know, we've noticed the uptick in the noise in our area and Kaneohe along the water. And also, we've had complaints to the Windward Coalition from Kaimalino. But more worrisome is that the EIS outlined a flight path for the Osprey, and they were not supposed to fly over homes. And there have been at least several reports, and we witnessed it on two occasions, of over flights of one and two even Osprey, I guess if you can call two a formation, over homes, which we were told would never happen. So I wondered if the flight plans, flight tracks have changed? And if so, would the community could be informed? Because as far as we know, it's, the EIS prohibited it.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Len?
Sure.
Are you, are you talking about like over where you live or over military homes on the base?
No, over our home.
Gotcha.
In fact, our neighbors from us and five or six or seven neighbors over towards the base have all called us generally within a few minutes of this happening that the Osprey were flying over the homes. So we, the crockery in our pantry was shaking.
Got you, thank you. Christie, do you want to take that back? Or do you, or you want to address it?
I will definitely take it back. I've received several phone calls, obviously, about the aircraft flying over. Do you folks have a specific date that this occurred?
I believe that at one occasion was the 6th of June. But I'd have to look through our records. But it was at least on two and possibly three occasions. I can, I can get you those days, but.
Were the phone calls, were the phone calls made on the same day as the overflight?
The phone calls sometimes are made to us because there's been kind of a decrease in responsiveness from the noise complaints from the base to actually answer these complaints. So unfortunately, we get them. I don't have that data right in front of me, but it was in the first week of June.
The reason I ask that, Len, is so Christie could effectively figure out who was flying that day and make sure the information gets to the appropriate commander.
Correct. I will definitely take that back and look at our data. We do log every phone call and email that is received from community members that are letting us know about the aircraft noise.
Yeah, well, the truth is that, I don't know. Hopefully now that has changed. But the community members are telling us that previously they weren't getting response. So it basically discouraged them from contacting you. Additionally, we were told that they would make every effort to do the run-ups, which seem to be increasing behind the hangars. And more and more, we're noticing that the run-ups are occurring on the apron on the water, which of course increases the noise level in the community. So you might bring that up with them as well.
I will, I'll take that back.
Len, I have, I have another question for you.
Sure.
When you call the voice, the, the noise hotline, do you get a response?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mahalo. Uh, next, we are moving to Kaneohe Christmas Parade. Janice.
My name is Janice Lai. And I would like to announce that our 60th Christmas Parade will be December, Saturday, December 7th. We, we missed 2020 and 2021, but this is number 60. So we're hoping it's, it's our biggest yet.
Do you know, do you know the date?
Saturday, December 7th. So we're going to be in competition for them, like the Marine Band, because it's December 7th and they usually participate, and the Royal Hawaiian Band.
Can always offer them a discount on their float. Okay. Next, we have a special. Question for?
Yeah, for the parade.
Yes.
Chair, you think we can have the Kaneohe Neighborhood Board participate in the parade?
Could you just hear you? You know, we're not going to talk about that now, but we can talk about that at Board Business.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Genius minds think alike. We have a brief for a special management SMA, Mark Howland. You available? 446, no, that's the wrong address. Oh, Lillipuna. 46059 Lillipuna Drive. Okay. We'll give you a second to yourself sit. Hi, Mark, how you doing? He's talking and nothing is happening? Oh. Can you go ahead and hit the unmute button? And then say some words.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you clear as a bell.
Oh, thank you so much. So I'm trying to upload the video. I think you already got it before.
Should we move on to the next one and come back to you after you've had a chance to take care of your tech?
No, I think we have it.
Okay. Is there anything that we can do to help?
Um, I think I sent you the file.
Sent it to?
Yeah, before. Maybe you could download it. Sorry, thing was canceled. And we're trying to do this again. But can I just describe the project verbally?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so this is 1588 Mokalua Drive, the very end of La Tais Beach. There's conforming structure.
Hold on just a second. Can you, can you tell me the address one more time, Mark?
Yes, 1588 Lululewa Drive.
You said that, you said Lanikai?
It's in Lanikai, yeah.
Oh, well, I don't think you need to present to this board, Mark. You would need to present to the Kai Lua Neighborhood Board. I have, I have on my list here four.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. This is Maj property.
46059 Lilipuna Drive.
Yeah, Lilipuna Drive, sorry. We have some people trying to get their projects in that they get kind of confused, sorry. So this property is one of the older houses along Lilipuna Drive that is a lot better words, kind of falling apart. And so Luca Mary Maj wants to renovate what they currently have and they live in, the existing home above Makasai, near Lilipuna Drive, is an Ohana Cottage, which again is also kind of falling apart. So they want to just renovate both places and do this. This will come in front of Esther for the Neighborhood Board and for the City Council. And she's always been very good in understanding what's going on. We appreciate that. But what's happening right now is a redesign of the existing house. The Mary Maj parents elderly, not what I want to use, not well health-wise. And so Luca Mary want to either have the Ohana Cottage remodeled or the ADU in the eternal property for the parents. So it will not be a vacation rental, B and B, none of that stuff. It'll be something that's done well. This is one of the most steeply sloping properties that you ever can find in Kaneohe. So there's no 0.5, 3.2, sea low or rise, no anything. And all they're doing is rehabilitating the main house, adding an ADU inside for the parents. And then also for against extended family, taking down, not all the way, but demo and renovate in the Ohana Cottage, again for family. So that's our presentation to you.
Thanks, Mark. Let me get. Rehabilitation of the house and then building an ADU within that. And then I also hear demo. What's going on there? Are they taking the whole house out or is it just a portion?
So the main house, it's basically a renovation. And then above by Lilipuna Place, there's a small little Ohana Cottage, less than 600 square feet. It's basically termite invested. They're going to just take it down to the foundation and replace it.
Got it.
And so, yeah, so it's basically because they're over 20,000 square feet in the Ohana Zone, they're allowed to build two dwellings. They have the existing septic system. For one, Board of Health has come back and said, okay, can you disconnect the Ohana Cottage, little septic, give its own individual septic, and they've agreed.
And thank you, Mark. Can, can you confirm one more time? 46059? Is it Lilipuna Drive, Lilipuna Road, Lilipuna Place?
It's Lilipuna Place. 46029?
Okay, well, where I'm clear about the location.
Oh, 059.
059 on Lilipuna Place.
Yeah, I'm sorry. A drive, a road?
No, no, okay. I appreciate it. Mark, I don't think the board's going to be able to take any action unless you're absolutely sure what the address is.
The on agenda says 59059 Lilipuna, and I believe it's road, but you have it as drive.
Okay, so, and you say the application says road?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, you've made your presentation to the board. Is there anyone from the community that's here from that area that wanted to speak on this project? Anybody from the board?
I would like to speak.
46059 Lilipuna Road. Yep.
I apologize. I can't put my hand up.
Well, I can hear you talking. So are you about to talk about this particular development?
Yes, but I, I don't know much. Our property is 023, and it sounds like he's describing 029, not 059.
Well, there's nothing the board can do. Well, we can put the minutes in and just say that we were confused. So we have to be sure about what the address is because, because, because the reason for that is we post this on the agenda and it gives the residents the opportunity to come here. And if we post the wrong address based on what was requested, then we're just going to be talking in circles about an area we don't know about. So.
I, I understand that. I wanted to get clarification on what the SMA is that he's concerned about.
Okay, so the owner of the property, Maj, has just emailed me. He says 029.
Yes, there are.
I guess, I guess you're on the bottom.
Yeah, 029 has five different residences on a two-resident lot. And.
No, they have, no, they have a boathouse, which is not exclusive, belongs to the community.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to go ahead and stop this conversation here. We've already gone long enough for a 10-minute brief on what we should have had. So if that's what the number is, Mark, you're going to have to come back to a board meeting and, and in a way can understand what we're talking about and the residents can understand. Because if Sarah is the only person here, there may be other people in the community. So there's really no point in discussing this any further. The board can't really make a decision about this until we've had a little bit of time. And now we don't have a visual except for our phones to find out where this exactly is. And if everybody doesn't have a phone or vision to look at a phone, à la Mr. Sakamoto, we're not getting anywhere on this one. So, Mark, you're going to have to come back. Okay, moving on to the next, next brief, we have, I think we're going to get this address right. 44667 Kaneohe Bay Drive. This is the Hawaiian Legacy Senior Care LLC. And there's a gentleman here to make a presentation on that.
Good evening, Board. My name is Kristin Isrelow. I'm with Isrelow Architects. I have been retained to prepare a design for a CUP major for a care home as at 44-687 Kaneohe Bay Drive. And I just wanted to present the project, tell you a little bit about it, and then answer any questions that you might have and hopefully get support from your board and community. I know that this project has been presented in the past. There were some, I guess you would call it some technical details in the application. And so we have resubmitted the plans that now meet the setbacks and the landscaping requirements that it didn't do before. And we've come up with a similar program where there will be 24 beds and the regular dining halls or, you know, auxiliary rooms that are needed for such a facility. We've tried to, as best that we could, keep it as private and I would say from private being meaning that we're trying to landscape it and create the least amount of impact in the neighborhood. Most of the activity will be hopefully directed towards Kaneohe Bay Drive. And hopefully the neighbors will not be impacted too much with, with the proper landscaping and focus of the facility towards the street, towards Kaneohe Bay Drive. The square footages are there on the, on the front. You can see that it's a two-story structure. I think we've, we've redesigned it in a way that we're hoping will be a nice architecture, at least in the neighborhood. Other than that, I probably some questions. So I'm here to answer any, if I can.
Any questions from the board or the community relating to this project? Look, Jeff, you go first. And then Janice? Oh, he did say that?
What did I say?
He, 687?
667.
I thought he said 667. Okay, all good. Sure. Can, can you read the, Jeff, read that again? Yeah. 014047? Thank you. Got you. Thank you. I saw another hand over there. Is there another hand over here? Laura? Yes.
Hi, I was just wondering if the amount of parking is sufficient to the number of employees, visitors, and so forth?
Yeah, well, the, the parking, we've, we've actually added more parking than what the law requires. So so I guess, I guess it would be sufficient. We're hoping that, I don't think, you know, we've tried, you know, again, we're following the law. We've added, I think, two, two extra parking more than that's what's required.
And then Mark?
Can you hear me? I have a question. Yeah, could you please describe the location? Because by looking at the map here, I can't, I'm having difficulty telling exactly where it is. So could you tell me where it is, say, from the YWCA?
You know, I'm not 100% familiar with like the landmarks here in Kaneohe. I, I'm actually from the other side of the island. But I will tell you, there's a temple that is right there. It's right when you're coming on Kaneohe Bay Drive and you kind of make a right turn onto, I guess, as it continues on Kaneohe Bay. There's a temple that's on the left side, directly opposite.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
No, it's a, it's a left turn.
Laura? Nothing? Mark? Who? Brian. Oh, I'm sorry.
I noticed on your plan that we have the flood zone. You, you have it as Xed Out, but as far as I know, that is in an extreme flood zone or tsunami zone for Kaneohe Bay. Is that? What considerations have been taken in about that?
Well, we, we have it as a flood zone X, not Xed Out, but it's a flood zone X. So, so there is no requirement for that flood zone, at least in that particular parcel. Now, if there is, if I've made a mistake or not done my research correctly, I'm sure the zoning department will make note of it. But as far as I know, it's flood zone X. That's what I, that's what I was, was taken from the website of the city in county.
Okay, but it is in an extreme, it's considered a tsunami zone for Kaneohe Bay, right?
Tsunami zone is different than a flood zone. Flood zone, so I'm not sure what the tsunami zone means because the whole island is technically in a tsunami zone.
No, that's not true.
Okay, so let me ask this. Is there any residents here that live adjacent to that property? Are you in a flood zone?
Yes.
Do you? You're in a floods, yes, you are in a flood zone. Sir, are you in a flood zone? Did you have to pay extra insurance? Okay, thank you. This probably isn't a flood zone, probably also because there's a drainage ditch that's adjacent to that property. So a little bit more research will probably, this is going to come up again, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm sure it's going to come up again.
Okay.
But it, it hadn't come up before. So, you know.
It hadn't, it hadn't come up with the community or with DPP?
With DPP.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that's, that, that's, that's surprising. We have 30 toilets. And I guess there, you have to get that permitted through sorry, what? Environmental services to have that many toilets on the property? And what kind of load that might be putting on the, on the system?
You know, we're going to go through all the permitting that's required, but I would tell you that with this, this type of project, it does not have to comply with zoning as of a residence. It's not the same type of zoning.
But it, but it is a, it is a property, it is a, a facility that's being built in and amongst homes.
Correct, correct. But you're asking me about zoning.
Yeah.
I'm just responding.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. So, and I also get it, the size of this thing is pretty big in relation to what's around it. And I'm just wondering if there's, if there's a, a winning point in this construction project that might be acceptable for the community, maybe one level, maybe 11, I don't know. And I don't.
Let me, let me respond to that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not done. Is, is there, is there a possibility that this project and the community can come together? And it may be no, which is fine.
Well, we, we're hoping there will be, but, but in response to the density, how big it is. And I'm not saying it's not big, but I am, I will tell you that the lot is also very big. And we only have a 45% lot coverage, which is significantly lower, again, than what the city would allow even for a residence. So that, in that sense, it's, it's big, but it's not that big per se.
That lot coverage doesn't include the parking or anything else, just the structure?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Any other questions? Cecil?
As you described the location of the property, it seems to me like there's, there's houses there. Are you going to have to acquire houses and tear them down or?
Well, again, what we're, if we're, if you look at the front page, you'll see the location of site.
Yeah.
There's, I would say that there's one specific house that is also on Kanaohe Bay Drive. And in that, that property itself would probably be the most impacted in terms of visual noise or whatever that would be. And I can't tell you that, I'm the architect, I'm not the developer or the owner, so I can't tell you if they have plans. I think they would welcome to purchase that property, but I, I wouldn't be able to tell you that specifically.
But, but do you know if there's homes on the property that, that you're, you're planning to build on here? I mean, do they have to be eliminated or?
Correct, there's, there are two homes on the property that will be demolished and a new structure will be built.
And, and the people have been forewarned?
Well, the, well, the owner lives in the, in the property, the owner of this project.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Who is the owner?
It's Jacob, I think he's, he's presented here before.
Yes, he's, he's the owner of the property?
Correct.
I have some questions, but I don't think
Well, hi Jody, is Jody, is that you?
Yeah.
Yeah, just go ahead and wait till I recognize you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I don't think Mr. Chan owns the property. And I don't know that's, I don't know if that's really relevant to this.
I couldn't tell you either. I mean, all I know is that he is the one that is spearheading.
Yeah, he might be the developer, but I don't think he's the owner. Anybody know who the owner is? Who is it? Oh, okay, yeah, they're, got you, they're here on the code data of that project. And Taylor Marie Lee. They're not here, are they? No. Sir, you had your hand up for a question?
Hello, my name is Kula Gawen Haile. I'm a resident of Kaipalu Place, a former board member in the Kanaohe Neighborhood Board, educator, lifelong educator, and a son of Kanaohe. Grew up here for four generations plus in the same area we're talking about. Question is, it is a flood zone and, and the lessons we learned from Maui is, is it a good place to put a kapuna home? There's only two ways, in and out of that road. I feel we gotta be a little bit smarter in how we develop. I'm not against development. I'm against bad development because it puts people at risk. We don't want a disaster to happen and then, oh, we should have, could have, or we didn't do our job. I also want to say that the neighborhood has gone through some settlement action already in the area with runoff. More commercial development seems not smart because you're going to have the same liabilities as more runoff. The area was a fishery, is a fish pond years ago, 100 plus years ago, and used to be a lot of oeal, a lot of veke and a lot of mullet. Through time, the runoff has chased everything away. My tutu man used to be there fishing when he was a little boy. I go out where he was and it's very hard. So I asked you guys to really think, where's the vicarious liability in this? Because we already know that we are, there was a settlement that already set precedence with commercial building and runoff. My question is, does it make sense? Mahalo.
And you wanted to speak, yes? What's your name, please?
Adjacent, right along the boundary of 44667, Kanaohe Bay Drive. So I'd just like to clarify that we received a letter that Mr. Chan would be presenting today, but we don't have any of the renderings or any information that's been presented, that was not provided to us. And we really have not had any engagement from the community issues. And we would really like to do that because the intensity, as Kula has said, and the scope of this, it, you know, when I think of 24 kapuna, 12 on the second floor, having to get downstairs in one elevator, said at the April Kanaohe Neighborhood Board meeting that this would be for memory care. And you know, I recognize that he identifies himself as coming from this community. I don't know what motivates him to be more concerned about profit than the neighbors, but it's a concern to have someone state in writing that they will avoid negative impacts in the neighborhood, but treat circumstances where there would be 24 cognitively impaired older people, 12 having to get down in one elevator. Space is so small that he is conceited, he will not have onsite transportation, so they will have to get private vans to come from offsite. If we were to have an island-wide emergency and at the April meeting of the emergency, folks said that they've been told in statewide meetings that Windrecide will be on its own. So what do you drive them up to the overpass and call it all good because DPP approved on the front end? You know, to me, it breaks my heart. There should be a way to come and talk together and compromise and not have it be about, I gotta have the 24 units for my numbers tour. So I really hope he engages in a meaningful way.
Mahalo. Okay, seeing no others, is there anybody here? Did you have something else?
Can I just summarize from what, looking at all the things that the community has already sent in?
That would be good because I'm just about to ask, I'm just about to call for a vote.
So from looking at the previous plan, just wanted to
That's right, sorry Jody, I haven't forgotten you.
Yeah. And I might cover this, but you know, the, this has expanded the original plan and the community had asked to, instead of going larger, to go smaller. You know, from the last time, no traffic study has been done and as you were saying, there's a limited access to this property. It doesn't look to me like there's enough parking spaces, but if that's within the boundaries of the, you know, the zoning, then that's fine. But, and then also I, I think it was refused or they said they, they, they weren't going to do an environmental impact yet. You know, it does look like, you know, it is both in a flood zone and a tsunami zone. So, you know, I, I would think, you know, as we were saying, if our kapuna is going to be there, you know, that we would take that into consideration. And the last thing, I think it was brought up, the sewer plan for 30 additional, you know, bathrooms. Since I live on Kanaohe Bay Drive, we had in part about adding, you know, just one bath to our house and that was have to go through a sewer process. So, you know, the sewer line is very limited when you're in Kanaohe. So those are the main things.
All right. I see, yeah, board member Keone, but also Jody, I stopped. Jody, you going to add some new to this? Or the same?
I guess my questions are, number one, traffic, because I live in the community, I walk in the community, there's no sidewalks, there's very little access for pedestrians as it is. And my concern is, you know, people are going to be coming and going from this property. I know that property very well and it's not that big. And I don't know how they're going to provide that much parking for employees, visitors. I don't, I don't get it. I guess they could cement the whole property. But the other, they were talking about the flooding and the tsunami inundation zone, we just had, you know, last month, a landslide right there at the hairpin turn. There's a blind turn as you come off of Kanaohe Bay Drive going towards the saddle road. And you, I have almost been taken out by city buses, by delivery trucks many times. And you come around that corner and boom, there you are at this developer's site. And how are people going to get in and out of their driveway? It's a single-family home. It has always been a single-family home. And now they want to make it a 24-person home.
So, so Jody, I, I know you're making your point, but these are the same points that have been made. So I, and we get you understanding that there has not been a traffic survey, which was also just brought up. Is there anything new to add?
Look at my list. Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Board member Keone?
Actually, I had more to say, but again, it's similar, in a similar fashion, a lot of it was already mentioned. I just want to say that I appreciate the former teacher and former board member. I don't, I missed his name, but I appreciate his comments. I really, I agree with them, so, nothing else to add.
All right, thank you. I, we, Mr. Sakamoto?
Yeah, Chair, I'd like to add another thing with transportation regarding the paratransit handy van city. Those vans are and just to get into that area, I would say it'd be a big problem to pick up elderly and disabled people if they have to use that service. That's all I foresee.
Thank you. Is there any motion from the board? And the motion, at this point, when we have a presentation on something like this, there could be no motion, which means the board takes no action. There could be a motion to think it's a great idea and approve it, or it's a motion to think that it's not a good idea and disapprove the, the, we have no teeth when it comes down to this. This all belongs to DPP. It's their decision-making, but we as a board represent the community, so we say what we say. Are there any motions? Yes, question?
Can we ask the DPP to explain their thinking, please? Can the DP, can the DPP please come and, and, excuse me, can the DPP please come and meet these neighbors and answer why they approved this project? Has not been approved yet. So can we have DPP join the discussion?
Then why are they, why are they here again? So they have to have this re-approved?
Can somebody give her a mic?
Yes, give her a mic. We can't hear.
Sorry, Rosie Boo again. He's running two tracks. He's sent his architect to present a project. It's a new application. You know, we've been requesting the communication between DPP.
Okay, so you're, you're going to start repeating the same thing that you said before. So, right now, there are, you're saying that there are two separate applications?
If they file the application, he will be running two.
So why are we here today? DPP has already made a decision? Did they approve or disapprove?
They approved and it's on appeal.
Okay.
Since it's on appeal, he wants to file again.
Got it. So there's one. Okay, so that's why you're here, is to present a new application, which is basically the same?
Which we haven't seen. Well, I think they're trying to correct the issues, but it really only corrects landscaping and setback. It doesn't address the
Which the gentleman just alluded to.
To that, but all of the issues on appeal have not been resolved.
Very good, thank you very much for the clarification. Once again, we have a question about whether DPP can come. I would say yes, but I'm asking once again, is there a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion.
Is that Keone?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to, for the board to not support this project based on community feedback.
Been moved not to support the project?
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded? Any discussion? In addition to what we've already had?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not done yet. We have to vote. Let's take a, a hand, well, Keone, you made the motion, so I'm assuming you're a no?
Correct.
Can I have a show of hands for not moving this project forward? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, it's unanimous, 10? Any, any wanting it to go forward or any abstentions? No, just nine. Thank you very much.
Mahalo.
That motion has been approved. We will ask DPP to come again. Yeah, thank you. About this? Can we, we've already dispensed with this? From yeah. Okay, moving along to UH Sustainable Reefs. Miley, are you here? Hi.
Hi, I'm Kira Hughes and I will be presenting today. Miley is also here and she'll be handing out some of our to feel and see and be able to explore just 3D printed ones. And then we also have a wave tank in the back that while I'm talking, you are welcome to go back there and try it out. So today we're talking about rapid resilient reefs for coastal defense. And it's a large collaborative project led by University of Hawaii. We, Miley and I are both from the Coral Resilience Lab at the Hawaii Institute of Marine Biology, so we work in this area and also I live across the street from the property you were just talking about, so really glad I came here tonight. Next slide, please. So we all know about the issues we have with coastal infrastructure and protecting our coastline. Next slide. So these traditional methods, sorry, I need to look for a second. Okay. Okay, these traditional methods are solutions, but we don't think that they're the best solutions. Next slide. So what we, this project is really trying to address, if we can make a nature-inspired reef design. And that means that we have some way to dissipate wave energy. We're also adding a biological component and not just a biological component, but the best biology we could possibly do based on the local environment. So nothing too crazy, but we are using the best possible things that we have from the environment in the place that this is going to go. So what you see in this image here, on the left-hand side, this is just a test. We've been doing some testing before we do anything in the field. We want to make sure that everything would work correctly and as these engineers are assuming. The lead engineer is from University of Hawaii as well. He's an ocean engineer. And we also are working with Makai Engineering, who are very versed in deployments in the ocean of these types of nature. So as you can see, these structures are not that big. They will actually be a little bit taller than our model here, once they would be deployed if we were to move forward. So these are modeled after a fringing reef, so again, trying So again, trying to naturally dissipate that wave energy. So this is an example at the top, um, the big wave outside of the reef, and that's the initial dissipation. And then all of these, uh, coming into the beach, um, they also dissipate wave energy, but in a much gentler way. Um, and as, if you've been out there, um, you would know that that's where a lot of like the more, um, uh, fragile corals can grow. So that can be more of a reef environment, um, the back reef, we call it. Um, and hopefully, since we're all Kanihoi residents, you guys have been able to get out in the bay and see our wonderful coral reefs there. So we're trying to design a similar reef that Kanihoi Bay has because it's a sheltered bay. Largest sheltered bay in all of Hawaii, actually. Next slide, please. Okay, so why am I here tonight? Um, but we are, we have done a lot of testing and I'm gonna, um, talk a little bit more about that next. But I did want you to know that we are looking at deploying a prototype in the field. So just, um, a model of what we're thinking about now that we've done all of the testing. And the proposed project location is in Ulupau, which is right by Molkapu Peninsula. Um, and right offshore from Fort Hase Beach on the Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Um, and it is within the security boundary of the Marine Corps Base Hawaii on purpose because we would like to, um, impact as, as few people as possible. Um, next slide, please. And obviously it's in the Aha'apua of Kanihoi. Um, so I see Anti-Rocky is here tonight. Um, and when we first were considering this project, um, Dr. Rob Tonan, who I work closely with and is on this project, he approached the Ko'ala Poco Hawaiian Civic Club and Anti-Rocky. Um, and we recently revisited, um, a meeting to make sure that everyone was okay with moving forward. Um, and, and, um, they were able to offer their support because this is really not just about the science, it's also about the community and what we can integrate into this project to support the community. Um, for future prototypes if this were to work, or future models if this were to work. So, um, what we have, the idea behind the whole project is to have this base structure. And I believe Miley passed out, um, some models. Um, and you can go back in the back and practice with the wave tank and see how this would actually work with these structures. Um, but they're all made into, they're all little modules. Um, I shouldn't say little, they're, they're medium-sized modules. 70 meters. Um, and if you think about the waves coming from offshore, um, you see there's two lines here of reef crest structures. That's kind of the, the white bars. And then behind that is the back reef structures, um, that are more spread out to just do that final dissipation of wave energy. And then these little tiny circles on top of the, the structure are, um, what a lot of the biology is gonna be on, and I'll show you more in the next slide. So we have these specially-made coral settlement modules that increases coral settlement by 500 times with our testing. It's pretty incredible. Um, so this is just natural settlement from the corals that are in the environment. Um, this would be built in a rocky or sandy area where there's no current reef. So you immediately, once these structures go in and the biology goes in, you have a functioning reef system. And then if you add corals and those encrust over the structure, then that helps solidify that structure and makes it last for a really long time. Um, so those crevices in this, uh, coral settlement module help to promote coral settlement. And then we've also seen oysters, sponges, and other animals, um, be able to recruit. Um, and then our lab specifically, we work with, um, local corals that we identify which ones are more heat resistant so that they can, um, resist coral bleaching. So coral bleaching is just when corals turn white. We've seen this in the bay. Last time was 2019, 2014, and 15, right before that, back-to-back bleaching events that were pretty tough. Um, so we want to make sure that the corals that are out there, um, are the ones that are more resistant to this heat if they're bleaching. So we're not just putting all that time and energy into everything and then having it all get wiped out, um, in the future. So we're doing that and then also, um, micro or just fragmenting, um, corals. And when they, uh, when they're small, they grow fast. And then when they fuse, they become a whole coral and then they can reproduce and do everything that they normally would. So it's a way to get more cover of coral rapidly. Next slide, please. Um, so we've tested a bunch of building materials. Um, they all, coral grows on them all pretty much the same. So we decided to move forward with concrete for the base layer. Um, it's just feasible and easy to access and, and work with. Next slide. Um, we are also collaborating with researchers that look at enhancing coral recruitment by, um, adding, uh, crustacean coral and algae, which is the glue of reefs. And that's what corals intentionally settle on. Um, and then also reducing this, um, low-cover algal growth. So not our native lemur that we're thinking about, but the stuff that competes with the coral. Um, and then also this is the larval recruitment that I was talking about, if you see the, the bright green dots. Next slide. So we don't only want to focus on coral, it's also about the whole community, um, in that reef. So we're really, and this is what, um, the Ko'ala Poco Hawaiian Civic Club brought up, is that what about the fish? We really want to... ...Bay compared to other areas. Um, and this is gonna be wrapping around to Kailua Bay where, you know, it's pretty empty at that site. So thinking about applying this in this one side as a prototype, but how can we expand this to the areas that really need it if it works? Um, so there's, uh, you can attract fish by, um, playing reef, like healthy reef sounds. So we've recorded from Polikilo and played that back. And as you can see, there's all these little juvenile, you can't see, but hopefully maybe if you're online, you can see these little tiny juvenile fish that are recruiting to that structure. But how do we keep them there? Because we see them recruit and then they go away once the sound goes away. Um, so then, uh, really, like, the Ko'ala Poco Hawaiian Civic Club really mentioned like, hey, what about Umukai, um, to be able to recruit larger fish? And then maybe the, the smaller fish will be able to stay there as well. Um, and then also planting native urchins, which is what our state, um, Department of Aquatic Resources already does. They, they've already outplanted a million of these in Kanihoi Bay, if you've seen that article. Um, and so just putting these out to help control the algae and so it's not competing with the coral. Next slide. And then if a coral bleaching event were to come, um, we're gonna try some solutions that we've been testing. One is just to stir up the water, make it foamy. Because it's not just about the heat in the water, it's also about the irradiance, which is the light coming in. So when you have those two coupled together, it's really, really tough because corals can't move. If you reduce that light intensity, then hopefully that will help the corals enough until that heat event goes away. Um, because you see these rapid heat events that come in and just completely startle the corals. Um, also, we're looking at feeding corals, um, by emitting just a little bit of light. So this looks bright here, but it's actually, you can barely see it over the surface. And it's just enough to recruit little zooplankton, little, um, animals, juvenile, or baby animals, I should say. Um, and those, uh, recruit and then the corals can actually feed on them until, and that will help them persist until the bleaching event goes away, the heat goes away. Uh, next slide. So that's it. That's all I wanted to share today and I just really wanted your feedback. I know there's not a lot of time tonight, so I can share my email, um, if you're interested in learning more. But, um, if there is time for questions, I'm happy to take them.
Mr. Sakamoto?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Just, uh, wanted to ask a few questions. Where was this, uh, done in other? Uh, to have this and then, how's the funding for this? How's this been paid and et cetera?
Yep, great questions. Um, this has not been done before anywhere. We are at the cutting edge of technology at the University of Hawaii. So we're testing all of it. We're working with engineers. We know that we can anchor down those structures. We know that they'll stay put. Um, we know that this biology works. So it's really exciting that we're the first ones to do this. And hopefully, this is a, a solution to some of the issues that we're seeing that's a little bit more biologically friendly. Um, as far as the funding, um, it was an, an announcement from DARPA, which is the... Geez, I'm, I'm just gonna say DARPA because I'm probably gonna not say the, what the acronym means correctly. But, um, it is a DoD-funded project and that is also why we're proposing by the Marine Corps Base. Um, because it, you know, the announcement was intended for military structures, but we, um, are really, we're focused on the community especially.
All right, thank you very much. Keone?
Hey, yeah, um, well, a couple of things. Uh, first off, playing music, um, and attracting the fish, that's, uh, very, uh, that's awesome. That's super, that threw me off guard. But our serious question was, um, what was the, I, I might have missed it, but what is the structure, the base of the structure made out of? Uh, you mentioned something about not the native lemur, that you guys wouldn't be using that, but you'd be using something else and I missed that part too. And then, um, if there's, uh, the types of coral that you guys are gonna use to, you know, get it going, uh, is it like local or indigenous or whatnot?
Uh, so the base of the structure, we decided on concrete because it didn't really make a difference which material we used. And that's the most feasible, um, easy-to-access material to work with. Um, and then the algae that we're trying to prevent is just that low-cover like turf algae because that competes with corals. Um, but the Umukai, we, um, are thinking about integrating native lemur there. So we, we work closely with the Wa'manala Lemu Hui and we asked them if they thought that might be something that's possible, um, to, to be able to outplant some native lemur there. So we wouldn't do that until, uh, we thought that it was really good conditions for that because we don't want to, um, but, but the native lemur somewhere where it is in such high demand.
Okay, thank you.
Cecil?
I might have missed this, but like, uh, these structures here, what is the size of these and what type of material are they made out of?
That's a great question. Um, so they're about seven feet tall. Um, and then the whole length of like, you have the reef crest structure, that would be 50 meters across. So there's 40 of those stacked side by side. Um, those holes in there though, those are for perforation to be able to bounce around the wave energy. But it also, those are about, um, 50 to 80 centimeters wide. So I know we were talking about the turtles earlier. We did that on purpose to make sure that turtles, if they did come in that area, which it's only 50 meters by 70 meters, it's kind of unlikely and it's pretty far offshore. But if they did, they'd be able to swim through those perforated holes. But once that's in, it would be acting like a fringing reef. So, um, there would be some wave energy there and it's likely that they would avoid, um, those structures and, and go around them. There's lots of space to go around.
And, and what are they made of again?
Uh, concrete.
Okay.
Yeah, that part.
What, what was, what was the dimension again, please?
Um, so...
Seven feet by?
I guess that's why it's not a, um, about seven feet, uh, and then across. I'm not sure, but it's, yeah, about, about seven feet. So if, if they're, those ones are a little bit longer, um, than the, their back reef structures. Um, but the whole, the, like, when those are put together, it's gonna be 50 meters, um, across that whole area and two rows of those.
Will this have a, a negative impact on surfing at all?
Well, there's not a lot of surfing at the site that we're working at. That's one of the reasons we chose it. So it's not, um, you must have permission to access that area because it's within the security boundary of the Marine Corps Base. Um, and so there is a little bit of fishing allowed there. So that's why I really agree if we can recruit some fish there. Um, but it is pretty offshore. So, um, yeah, we, when we're just trying this out as a prototype, we want to make sure that we're having recreational users as possible.
All right, thank you.
I have been asked to make the perfect wave though with this and I don't know if that's possible yet. Maybe we'll keep working on it.
Uh, thanks so much for your presentation. I, I, I like that we have some hope for our reefs and people are working on it continuously. So thank you for that.
Thank you. So grateful to be here.
All right, moving along to resident community concerns. Are there any? These are, now, these, these are announcements? Okay, go ahead.
My name's Lisa Uwassato. I'm from Windward Neighborhood Security Watch Coordinator's Group. So the first, uh, announcement is for the coordinators meeting that will be held on July 27th, Saturday, at Po'on Maluia Gardens at 10:00 AM. And then let's see, the second announcement is there will be a Pokémon fair at Windward Mall on August 10th, Saturday, from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM. And that'll be at the Windward Mall, uh, Center Court. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Aloha, I'm your neighbor down the street. Um, I'm in the offshore area. I just wanted to drop in and say hi. I am, uh, uh, running for the office of mayor. I, I've been at the city, uh, as a volunteer for the past 20 years. And I, I always felt like it would get better and it doesn't. But, uh, one of our biggest concern right now, uh, and it, and it concerns you all too, is that there is a media blackout on the Honolulu mayor's race. Somebody has decreed that there will be no mayor's debate for the island of Oahu. The Hawaii island with a population of 200,000 had their mayor's forum on June 13. And friends have called in, people have called in, and the response from the corporate media is that, oh, uh, we don't have enough time between now and primary to be hosting, uh, any mayor's, uh, debate. And I find that really undemocratic, even if it's not me. It's very undemocratic to think that corporate media can just decide, oh, we're not gonna have, uh, uh, mayor's forum for Oahu when Oahu is a million population. I'm sure you have concerns of the rail, we have crime, we have, we have land use issues. That is a whole big mess, the DPP. And, and they can gain approval without the public knowing. And recently, the S-B, you know, 32...
Okay, your time is, your time is running out. You only got three minutes.
So, so I have a lot of concerns and a, and a very, um, alarm that somebody has decreed that there will be no dialogue for the mayor's, um, race. Thank you very much and keep up your good work. I see you on TV. So, thank you.
Can I get your name? Yeah, you, you might be, yeah, what's your name?
Choan James, C-H-O-O-N James. And I've been at the city for 20 years. We know what's going on.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Choan. All right, uh, any other community concerns? Thank you.
Uh, Maurice Muio. I just wanted to publicly thank, uh, the Kanihoi Board for their participation. Uh, I'm thanking on behalf of Kanihoi Kahalu Sert, uh, for the Board's, um, presentation, emergency preparedness fair. Uh, you're only one of two out of like five years that have come. And I'm very thankful that you showed particularly Neil and Dale Kayman. And of course, uh, member Mark is also part of the KK6. So thank you for your community, all.
Thank you. Uh, we have, uh, a community comment online. Judith. Inazu. Off you go. Hi Judith, you still with us? So if you are talking, you are muted. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move ahead a little bit. And if Judith, you can un, get your text squared away, then we can come back to you. Uh, elected officials?
Can I, Chair, can I ask a concern that was brought to my attention?
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair. There was a, uh, resident came to me to, um, express concerns about Aloha St., uh, Alalahoa Street, uh, that's in Crown Terrace. St., Aloha Loa Street, that's in Crown Terrace. There's a bridge going on to another subdivision by Hiaiua Road on the opposite side going towards Kahalu in that subdivision. Overgrown vegetation, trees, you name it. It's a wide concern of vegetation that could cause flooding over there for the residents. And Koniki Road, uh, street, I mean, by Anoi Road across uh, Liki Liki, um, there's a lot of vegetation. I brought to represent Scott Matioshi at the May 11th, um, certain emergency preparedness. And I believe that's a state canal, but large vegetation, very about flooding. And then I brought this up before, uh, Kahipa Street on the Aloha, Aloha Loa Street, you know, behind the mall. On the June 5th, I was with my cousin on Kahipa Street, and she was coming out from her apartment from the parking lot across City Mill, almost got whacked. People were going too fast and the cars are parked too close to the drivers. I brought this up before, but that's my concern on safety. Luckily, I wasn't hit. My cousin needed it.
Did you bring that up with HPD during their report?
Uh, no, I forgot.
I think sometimes when you, and this is for everybody, if you have an issue with HPD, the best thing to do is bring it up when they're doing their brief, because they leave right after that to go and serve and protect. So try and get that information to them while they're here. Now, it's been documented and it's on the record again. So thank you, Mr. Sakamoto.
Thank you, Chair.
Did she get squared away? No? Okay, well, we'll just move, we'll move on to US Representative Jill Tacuta's office. Governor Green's representative. Tara Castrovincini. Judith is asking, I can't unmute. Will my input in the chat be sufficient? Okay, so we're all watching in real time, the, the chat between Dylan and, okay, thank you. Mayor Rick Blangardi's representative.
Hi, good evening, Chair, Board members and committee members. I'm Carrie Castle. I am the Deputy Director of Budget and Fiscal Services, representing Mayor Blangardi this evening. Director Kowano sends his regrets that he wasn't able to be here this, this evening, but I'll do my best to address any issues and share some information. Seeing that we're running quite short on time, I, I would like to report that the mayor's June newsletter is available at www.honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter. I will put that address into the chat. One of the highlights in the newsletter this month is the fact that Mayor signed a couple of resolutions that were proposed by City Council to stand up ocean safety as its own department. In addition, voters will have a chance to determine whether a commission should provide oversight and accountability over the, that department, similar to HPD and HFD. With respect to issues, I've taken note of your requests to have DPP address or look at Mr., well, I'll just say the Hawaii Legacy Senior Care matter. So I will take that back to DPP. Going back to last month's report, it appears that there was one issue that was outstanding, and I believe that has been covered sufficiently at the start when HPD provided their report regarding statistics on speeding citations. An update that was not on the report from last month is a bit of good news in that our Department of Facilities Maintenance has done some re-surfacing work at the corner of Haiku Road and Kamia Mea Highway. On a personal note, I'm really grateful to the board and the community for raising this matter. I cross that intersection every single day. It is beautiful. So I really want to thank the community and the board. That's all I have. I'm open for questions.
Okay, standby for the questions. We have one more presenter, then we take Governor, Mayor, City questions. Next is Vice Chair and Councilmember Esther Kiaaina.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Carrie did such a good job. She covered a lot of the issues that I was going to raise relating to both ocean safety as well as Kamia Mea Highway. Jaren of my office will put in the chat box the number to contact if there's any challenges with the repairs. BOW Construction is going, is, is doing the work for the Department of Facility Maintenance. I have already received concerns that apart from the area that they're focusing on, between Haiku Road and Ka'ahala Road, that there are other areas right down the road that also need some, some assistance. And, and so I'm going to be following up with the city because they're already on the road. I don't understand why they can't go down just a little further down the road. Another public safety issue I wanted to talk about was on Lilipuna Road. I know we've, we get a lot. And so I followed up with the Department of Transportation Services. They confirmed that a lot of the warning and advisory signs are actually appropriate, appropriate. However, they have noticed that a lot of the portions of the road are 18 feet or less. And as such, under the revised ordinance, the speed limit should be 50 miles per hour. And so the Department of Facility Maintenance is going to install speed limits for 15 miles per hour on, on Lilipuna Road between 45001 Lilipuna Road and Alina Place. And they're also going to replace signs in need of maintenance in the area, including faded turn and Chevron warning signs. And I actually had to ask my staff what Chevron warning signs are, but those are the big yellow signs with the big things that go like a V like that. So anyway, that's, I'm just here for questions, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. And now opening the floor for questions for all of those representatives. I see Mr. Sakamoto, Ms. Burbage.
Good, thank you, Chair.
Off you go.
Question for the governor's office. In, I think in March 2023 last year, February, there was a media news break in story about the Department Health records that records were breached. I'd like to know if there's any update, who did it, and what actions were done. It just was reported in the news, but no follow-up. The next would be for the mayor. There was a cyber attack on the paratransit and bus system for Walau. It was chaotic on June 10. And then there was another shutdown of the system on the 15th of this month. As a paratransit user and a person that advocates for public transportation or Walau Transit, as well as the city, I'm very disturbed what happened because this Holocard that I have, when you show it to the bus from the 15th on, they won't take anything from the card because system Holocard is down. The paratransit users would have to pay out of pocket. They wouldn't get a break like this with their Holocard. I don't think that's fair, but how much revenue was lost from the fees collected on the bus is dramatic to the impact of the budget. And I, I urge the budget director, as well as the budget chair of council, to investigate what happened and see what was the cause and how much revenue we lost. Regarding with the paratransit handy van, the city has bought 14 rear-driven lift vans with a step that is so high to climb. As a disabled person is dangerous, about six inches high compared to the regular cutaway vans that they use. It's not that high to board a van. If you pick up and drop off on the road, it's very dangerous. And they bought 14 of these vans and they're going to buy 15 more. I brought this up before. I urge the mayor to check into this because it's a danger and safety hazard for passengers like myself who are disabled, who have to access these vehicles, as well as operators who drive them. So I urge them to go back to a side lift paratransit handy van, or a low floor where you can just wheel in the wheelchair and scooters, which is much more safe and more practical. But I don't know why the administration is going this way. But my concerns are just if City Council Chair, Vice Chair Kiaaina, if you can request the Transportation Department Chair, Dilav Desantistan, the City Council to have another hearing, update from Walau Transit and details on the paratransit and cyber attack would be great, as well as Budget Chair, Riddin Codero, to have a investigation of what happened with the fees that were lost on our bus system. Thank you.
So, so that doesn't sound like those were questions that are going to be answered now? You're requesting for information to come forthcoming? Okay, thank you. I think that was it. No, oh, Laura Rocky.
Hi Esther, I also had that same concern and emailed you about the whole cyber attack thing and what are we doing to mitigate some, you know, the potential going forward. But my other small concern is that the, the suppositions-
Can I stop you for just a second? Because we, that's twice now that that's been brought up. Do you have any information on the cyber attack? Does anybody, they can share with us?
No, we don't.
I've got a little information if, if needed, but Esther, you, you go ahead.
Are you talking about the city's one? There's two, right? So I guess all I'm just saying is that I do believe it is warranted to have a informational briefing by the appropriate committees, and that would be technology. So for our information technology department. And so I think that would be the appropriate avenue for the city administration and the, the director of that department to be able, because he works with all of the various agencies. So we'll have information technology as, as well as the bus and the Department of Transportation Services. And I'll work with Carrie as well.
Yeah, I don't think we need to know exactly what they're going to do to solve the cyber issue, because sometimes giving that information creates more problems for the people that are trying to break in. But is something being done?
Yep.
So Chair, I believe that they're still investigating. You know, I don't think that there's been a conclusion yet as to exactly what happened. But-
If that's the case, then that's bad. If we're this far down the road after a cyber attack and we don't know how it happened?
No, I'm not saying, sorry, I'm not saying that it, we don't know. I'm saying investigation is still being conducted and information to be shared.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Laura, I interrupted you.
That's okay. It's just about a sidewalk on between Kamau Place, and it's heading up toward Kahakili Highway on Ka'ahala Road. It's, I mean, it, sidewalk is so bad, torn up and so on. And that's where a lot of people are crossing if they're coming up Ka'ahala, going up to the district pool and the park and the community college.
We have noted that and will follow up.
Thanks.
Auntie Rocky.
Aloha Maika, Ko'raikita Loheva. And first of all, mahalo to Esther and our elected officials, because some of us do appreciate your job. Mahalo for your hard work. I'm concerned about the lighting, the streetlights on Haiku and Kamia Mea Highway. For years, I've been trying to get them to fix it. Now that they're fixing the roads, maybe you can get them to look at it. The lighting, the timing is off. I see people early in the morning, they don't even wait for the light already. Because when you're coming from the Kahaluu area, the light is delayed. Haiku is the other side coming from Kaniwe. They're passing, and the delayed people are late for work and they're just going to the red light already. The second one is a stop, is the streetlights on Kahupa Street and Kamia Mea Highway. For the last week, it went out about three times. So now that you guys are doing the roadwork, please look into the lighting. It needs, it needs to be fixed. We don't want to become like Chinatown and everything goes out blank. It's already going blank on Kahipa and Kamia Mea Highway, and that's a dangerous corner to go through also. Mahalo.
Thank you, Auntie Rocky.
I, I just, I just need to add on to Auntie Rocky's comment. When the, when the traffic light was not working, there was a, a couple of police officers there for the, for the, the folks that were actually working on the road, for whatever their duty is, the special duty folks over there. Would it ever be possible, would it ever be efficient that when something like that happens, they can shift their focus to directing traffic and at the same time still keeping the workers safe that are working on the road? Because they're just, they were just standing there.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
We're going to talk to the policing team. Chair, I did want to, I know you guys are having a discussion on a, on a candidate forum at the next neighborhood board meeting, and I just wanted to let you know that PBS Insights is going to be having a forum the same night between 7:30 and 8:30 for the City Council District Three candidates. So-
Thank you for that information. We'll schedule ours if we do have one on another night.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Jeff?
Travelled abroad to LA approximately on May 1st.
A little closer to the mic, and you can raise it up if you want.
So I visited LA approximately on May 1st and used their public transit system, which I believe we're trying to copy with, I don't know what we would call it, rail? The rail? The rail. The rail and the bus. They have this thing called Apple Pay, which is a little more secure than the Holocards. They accept electronic transactions, although they encourage the usage of their system. But people can hack it through RFID. Was your breach from like a user standpoint, or was it a server at the backend? I could explain it to you right now how I did it. I brought the app.
No, no. Still being investigated. Thanks, Jeff. Sarah online?
Yes. My question is for Esther, real quick. What date are the sign, signage changes occurring on Lilipuna? And that's from the Big Pier Kahua side to Alina Place?
So, Sarah, I actually don't have the dates. If you don't mind, if you could email me, I will find out the timeframe. Jaren, if you could put my email in the chat box, ekiaaina@honolulu.gov.
Thank you very much. Is, is it only because the road is 18 feet wide?
Less, 18 feet and less. So regrettably, the rest of it is not. And so they had deemed that with regard to the speed mitigation measures, that they felt that the signage was appropriate.
Okay. The, the corners that are Kahaluu side of the Big Pier, we used to get police cars that would chase drivers and they would end up going into kitchens and such because they didn't make the turns. Is the signage for those corners going to change?
Sarah, if you don't mind, because I don't know the details of what you're, you are explaining to me, but I need to know that continued increase to the appropriate agency sometimes yields outcomes. And I do go out into the field on occasion. And Jaren of my office, if you were to email me, I might, maybe I could go to your neighborhood and you show me exactly what you're talking about.
Mahalo. Thank you.
And that takes care of the, the city governor and council member. Moving on to the senators and representatives. Is there anyone from Senator Keho Kaloli's office?
I am here, Chair, and members of the board and everyone watching from the-
I am here, Chair and members of the board and everyone watching from the community. Aloha. I believe we didn't have a May meeting. So happy to talk, I guess collectively with the reps and other legislators on the call about any of the major pieces of legislation. The, if you've been following the news, we passed the largest income tax reduction in state history. Funding was put in to acquire the HPU property. If the board is interested in further discussion about this, I'm happy to reach out to the administration and ask that they make someone available. Maybe at the next meeting. The Chair of the DLNR, who is the lead member of the administration on the acquisition of HPU's campus, Hawaii Law Campus across from Poli Golf Course, lives in Kanoei. So I'm sure we can make that happen. The, there are still negotiations are ongoing in terms of the state acquiring the property from Adventist Health Castle, who was elected to move on from their prior plans to build out healthcare facilities at that, at that property. Short-term rentals, invasive species, exemptions for Medicaid, Tricare, Medicare rainy day fund addition, the bills that did not pass, including insurance stabilization, the Hiko bills, cannabis, happy to talk about any of those. And then I'll close with a discussion about cybersecurity. Laura emailed earlier in the week to ask about the state side and also critical infrastructure. So I spoke with the State Chief Information Security Officer this morning. His name is Vincent Huang. He submitted a report to the legislature that is linked in the chat that I just sent that essentially is an outline of the cybersecurity elements that the state of Hawaii is engaged in. Also spoke with Ernie Lau today and Shelly Kimura of Hiko about their cybersecurity apparatus, because the question was about state and then infrastructure, water, electricity. All of them are a part of the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Authority, CISA. CISA, that's also linked in the chat, which is the national entity that's comprised of all state and national government and infrastructure actors. They, it's a collaboration forum so that they can all stay on top of the best management practices in trying to address the latest types of funky, you know, cybersecurity threats from non-state actors, from belligerent state actors. They coordinate with the FBI. And Hiko in particular has robust engagement with the military because the DOG does utilize Hiko's system. Everyone is aware of the, of the incident that took place with the bus last week. No one was willing to guarantee that the system is completely, their systems are completely secure, which is the answer that you want to hear because it is impossible to guarantee any system's ability to defend all attacks. But they all, they all specifically noted their concern about phishing as that is what seems to be the primary avenue for cyber attacks to take place. Weak passwords and then people, you know, workers who have access to their internal systems clicking on, on bad links. The outages in Chinatown are not the result of a cybersecurity attack. I asked Hiko about that this morning. That system in Chinatown is completely analog, which is part of the problem. It's 70 years old and is antiquated. So I'll stop there. Happy to take questions after my colleagues finish their presentations. Thank you.
Thank you very much Senator. Next is Senator Awa.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Kanahehanebrow Board, Chair, Members and Members of the Community. My name is Elizabeth Tatofi Tavake and I'm here to provide Senator Awa's monthly update. It's gonna be a quick one, pretty much just one update. But tonight our office really has one report or announcement mainly to address the increasing concerns our office has received regarding the coconut rhinoceros beetles. Like Senator Keho had mentioned, the invasive species. A lot of measures passed over the session, but the negative, but we're also trying to address the negative impact they have caused in the community. So on Monday, July 1st, we will be hosting a CRB workshop or town hall at Kahaluu Elementary School from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. This event will feature representatives from the Department of Agriculture, the Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle Response Team, as well as members of the community who possess valuable knowledge about the CRBs. This workshop aims to address the issues surrounding CRBs and gather input and solutions from various stakeholders. We encourage all community members to attend and participate in this important discussion. And really that concludes my update for tonight. But I'm available to take back any questions or concerns you may have for Senator Awa.
Mahalo. Uh, next is Representative Kitigawa.
My name is Wendy. I'm Rep's Office Manager. So she just wanted me to come here. She's so sorry she couldn't be online or in person. But there's just a couple of updates. We did have our e-waste collection event on Saturday. We had record number of stuff brought for recycling and donations. So thank you to everyone who participated and helped out. The thing we really wanted to emphasize is our next event, also with Rep Matayoshi, is our school supply drive. So that's gonna be July 13th and 14th at Winram Mall. And I also brought wanted a copy. I have extras tonight. So thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Next is Representative Matayoshi.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to echo that the e-waste recycle drive was a huge success. We also took in eyeglasses and clothes donations and high five for Castle High School. You know, a lot of people were throwing away perfectly good working TVs just because they had gotten new ones. So our Marine Corps volunteers, a lot of young guys got to take about six flat screen TVs home to the base to distribute to their friends too. So a good incentive, I think. I think we're gonna get a lot of Marine Corps volunteers next year with that kind of advertisement. I did have a, I was asked by Laura to update people on the bus, but I mean, we've talked about that kind of a lot. I know the FBI and HPD are looking into it. But I don't want to go into it any further. I think we've talked about that a lot. I am working on an albizia workshop to start getting rid of albizias. Actually, it's more of a strike force, for lack of a better term. But we're experimenting right now in Mount Wili, creating community groups to go out and actually walk the streams and kill these things and take them out while they're, while they're still small and not very expensive and threatening houses and power lines. So depending on how that goes, I'm gonna try to spread that over to Kanoei's side. But Mount Wili is one of the worst hotspots for albizias. It's really bad in there. So if we can get it to work there, I'd like to move it over to Kanoei as well. I know, I mean, got some in Hawaii Memorial Park and you just look at the mountains, it's everywhere. But been working on that. So hopefully that'll be successful. I thought I had a couple more things. Wendy already talked about the school supply drive. Oh, one other thing I'm working on, I know Jared and I have been working on little fire, we've all been working on little fire ants. There's a food, I'm working on creating a food map for Kanoei right now. So at some point, I'm gonna be sending out a survey or asking people to let us know what kind of fruit and food trees they have growing on their residential properties. There's a place called, or there's an organization called Aloha Harvest that will come to your house and pick the fruit for you for free, leave you some and then use the rest to feed people who are hungry, you know, who are food insecure. But they don't know where the food is and people don't know that this free service is available. So we got mangoes drop in, you know, on the ground, creating rat problems, especially for older folks that may not, may not have the strength to get up there and, you know, pick the mangoes at the top of the tree. So it's a good service for the community. But I think if we figure out where all the food is in our community, we can harvest it better and kind of use it better to feed, feed people in our neighborhood, feed people in our community. So working on that, hopefully that'll come out at some point. And like Jared said, do, you know, happy to talk about any legislation or anything coming up. Thanks.
And finally, Representative Burdick, I see.
Hi, it's Natalia Hatzey Burdick. Give me just a moment while I find the right screen to share. All right, so as you guys know, the legislative session ended last month. So now it's really the Governor Green's time to shine. The 25th of this month is his deadline to produce his intent to veto list. So if you have any bills that you feel strongly about whether they should pass or veto, contact Governor Green about it here. I've been getting a lot of calls about H3 racing, racing on the H3, a lot of motorcycles. I do follow up with HPD every time, but a lot of times I hear that they didn't get any police reports. And I'm finding that some people are reporting it on the Honolulu 311 app, which is not the correct place to report it. You're gonna want to call HPD every time and get a police report number. And if you get that report number, then I can follow up with them, but they can't really do much without a report number. Did a wildfire prevention town hall. It's available on O'Lelo. If you want to take a look, it's online. Go to o'lelo.org and search for the Hussey Burdick Town Hall. Working on wildfire prevention preparedness all throughout our community. So if you want to sign up to become part of our Firewise Community Group, there's a link here or if you contact me, I can email you the link to sign up. There are free meals being given to any Kiki 18 years of age or younger for the summer in select public schools. So here's the list of Kahua, Kanoei ones. The Kanoei ones are Kanoei Elementary, King Intermediate, Heiaia Elementary, Kahaluu Elementary, and then of course Kahua Elementary and Keolu. We just got an update about little fire ants. There's been a couple of new sites found in my district and the surrounding districts. So we're passing out little fire ant test kits to all the affected communities. So if you want to sign up to join us, there's a link here. And of course, I can send you that link as well. If you just contact me and there's my contact info. That's all I've got.
All right, questions for those five legislators? Mr. Sakamoto, before you start talking, select one issue and then get the response. And then if you have another issue, then follow up. Because four issues in a row, it doesn't get us anywhere from the last time, remember?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. This question is to Senator Jared and Scott Matayoshi, my rep. I brought up about the citations given for people with no license or registration or not. What can the state do to take care of this situation to get these people off? The police said they only can do so much as you with the legislature needs to pass tougher laws. So what can be done for next year on this matter?
So if it's driving without a license, I've, I actually put forward a bill this last session to try to deal with that. It would have allowed judges to, on the third time, actually take the car that was used in perpetration of that crime. We ran into, I had a lot of meetings with HPD up and down the ranks and a whole bunch of people. They just didn't have the space to take the car. But for me, you know, if someone's driving without a license, they're endangering people on the road and that car's gotta go. I don't care who it belongs to. About half of the fatalities and half of the crashes are involved someone driving without a license. So it's a huge, huge number and a huge, huge problem. I intend to introduce the bill again next year with a little bit of a twist, but I'm still working on that. But yeah, I'm trying to tackle that too.
Well, I would like to work with you on that. This is a
Happy to have you, Donald.
And then the speeding on H3, I've been working with Major Piva and the previous majors as well as each police department. What can be done about the noise? The noise level is the one I'm concerned. It's so noisy on the weekends at 1:00 or 12:00 in the morning. And especially on Sundays when I have to go to church. And I'm, I'm yawning in church because I'm, I was walking so early. But it's horrendous to have these mufflers backfiring, beeping noise from their horns. And at least maybe 80 vehicles going back around the Kamameha Highway at H2 where they're on Exit 11. It's horrible. Is there any law that says the mufflers or its high noise capacity on their vehicles?
I don't know if someone else wants to take that, but HPD is probably the first.
That bill came up. I can't, I, I can't remember. Mr. Sakamoto, we're gonna have to go check. I thought we actually passed it this year, but I cannot remember off the top of my head. So we can go check. I know there was a piece of legislation on that. So if it died, then we can queue you into it as it goes through. I'm sure it'll be reintroduced next year. I'm looking at Natalia, look it up right now.
It's, it was the YCT special.
Otherwise, we can do the bill next year.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'd like to work with you there. And then a certain thing about these streams, Scott, I met you at the May 11th, Wintermont Cert. I talked about the Connecticut Street stream. What is going on with that? I believe you said that's a state issue. Between the
It's a city, the city cleans out the streams, but they did promise me that they started. You know, I live right there. I don't see it starting, to be totally honest with you. They were supposed to start early this month. But again, they're always pulled on, emergencies take precedence. So if a stream is blocked somewhere else, if you know, how, there's a more imminent flooding hazard somewhere else, they get pulled. So they did warn me, you know, they were supposed to start late May, they got pushed to early June. Now we're mid-June. We'll follow up with them. I'll try to get you an update next meeting on it. But that huge rain we had certainly washed a bunch of the plants away. So it looks pretty okay now. They gotta get in there and do the real work too.
My last question to you folks is microplastics. It's been in the media, like water bottles like I want to have right now. I'm just worried about going in the system of our bodies and damaging our system. So what protocols are being done at the legislature to address microplastic that we have in our food supply?
That's a tough one. Microplastics, I mean, you're literally drinking from a plastic water bottle right now, like you pointed out. I mean, microplastics are getting us through medical supplies, all kinds of things. Almost all plastics create microplastics and plastics are, for better or worse, part of our everyday lives. I think things can be done, especially when it comes to food and drink consumption, using plastic or not trying to avoid using plastic. But boy, I got a two-year-old and a four-year-old and I ain't giving them a glass cup, you know? So it's, it's tough. It's a tough situation. I don't think that we've, we have any kind of real solution right now. But if another legislator has one, go for it.
I would say, Mr. Sakamoto, if you have some sort of specific angle you would like to take on that, then let us know and then, and then we can work with you to chase down the action that would need to be taken. Sometimes it might be administrative and we don't need a bill. I mean, I don't need to explain that to you. But if you have a specific angle, then I'd be happy to have, we just got a, we just got a college intern for the summer today. And I, I already told him I was gonna load him down with projects, but we, we don't have enough. So we'll take it. And then Natalia did put in the chat, SB 2350 was the noisy muffler bill. So it's Senate Bill 2350, it did pass.
Okay, so it's just waiting for signature.
Or you can ask the governor to sign it.
Okay, thank you. Veto it. Okay. Thank you.
You're good? Jeff?
Do either of the representatives, Senate or House or Esther, know a man named Chad Koyagagi?
Yes.
Why?
Psychiatrist at Castle Hospital. He served there, I believe, since, was it 2010? Until recently, when he was appointed by DOH to head up their new facility, which I believe is in Ivalae, is that correct? So both buses, I think, 60, 61. I don't know if 69 or on Natalia's side of things, 66, right? Make it to Ivalae. But they do have access. Instead of calling 911, perhaps making friends with them, you know, bringing them food because starving person is pretty tragic and lack of food and water can make anyone go insane as well as sleep. I can't imagine sleeping very well with, you know, the children now graduated, believe that they're God. So yeah, I mean, let's put it that way. I've spoken with some of them and they've said quite some things about some people's children in our town, about the trash that ends up there, who's exactly been drinking on the street. I'm not gonna pretend like I'm gonna do a Dr. Seuss routine right now and break out and rhyme. now and break out in rhyme. But you did the crime at the time.
Thanks, Jeff. Auntie Rocky?
Hello, my kako. Again, I commend you guys for doing a good job. I appreciate your work. I spent the whole day Saturday at the Heikea Pier. We did two tours of Kala Pokawai Civic Club. And I got to sit and talk with three of the enforcement officers. They were doing a good job there. The only thing is, the discussion we had is, they cannot, they are afraid that either this DLNR would get sued, or they would get sued, the way the bill is written, they don't know how to imply it. They see a lot of illegal commercial businesses, they tag them, they gave some of them tags, but yet they cannot enforce. So I think the legislature would have to give a workshop to the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Either that, or they would have to touch bases with the Attorney General, because they themselves, they don't have a senior officer that can advise them on what they can and cannot do. So that has to be fixed. Mahalo.
Thanks, Auntie Rocky. I think the AG's office is probably a good resource for them. And they should have their own AG dedicated to DLNR, who should be able to answer these questions. But, you know, Jared and I are attorneys, and I know attorneys can kind of not give straight answers a lot of the time. So I sympathize with them. It would obviously be much better to have someone more experienced working with them that's not an attorney that just kind of knows how to do it. But if they have questions, they should reach out to their own, their Attorney General assigned to them, who should have more expertise in that subject matter area.
I do, too. I feel sorry for them, because they're trying to do their job. They gave them tickets for overloading the boat, but they cannot really enforce what laws was just written this past year. So they really need help. Mahalo.
Well, we'll, we'll reach out to Dawn. We're asking her to come next month anyway, I believe, right? So.
No, no, no meeting, no, no meeting next month.
Oh, oh, right. Okay. Well, if, if the board would like to ask me to ask Dawn to attend for the HPU issue, then I'd be happy to relay that back.
Dawn is DLNR, DPP?
Dawn Chang, Chair of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Yeah, we will, I will reach out to her independently anyway, on this Kanihohe Bay issue, and then also on, on the HPU issue.
I think an HPU issue, I think the board would like to have a little understanding in probably a month and a half from now. Maybe we will know a little bit more. And definitely, I know that the, the Kanihoe Bay Regional Council and the legislature came up with some, some administrative rules, or even a law, I think, I'm not sure which, to prevent the commercialization, over-commercialization of the bay. And if they're unable to enforce what was written, maybe we need to readjust quickly. I'd like to know what it was that they feel like they can't do. Mahalo. Uh, okay. That's everyone. Thank you so much for being on screen. Thanks for keeping a surprise of what's happening. And thank you for your service. All right, where are we? Holly advises me, we're on the next page. Community organizations, One Word Community College. Hakipu'u Learning Center. Next is board business, approval of the regular meeting minutes from April 2024. Everybody's had a chance to see. Is there a motion to approve? Sakamoto wishes to approve the minutes as great thing. Mr. Sak, it's been moved and seconded. Without objection, the April minutes will be approved. Candidate forum coming up in July. We have, we've decided as a board to recess our July meeting. It seems that there is a opportunity to let some folks that are interested in running for office, and that's before the primary election, to have a chance and come to the board and, and chat with us. What do you all think about the format? What would, would you envision something happening? How would you like to see something like that? Or would you like it at all? Go ahead, Mr. Sakamoto.
Chair, I wasn't here at the last time you did this. How was the structure back then?
The last one I can recall, the, the different races, when did the, they went one after the other, and had a chance to just tell us a little bit about themselves. I don't recall if we had a question in the mix. And if we did have a question in the mix, it might have been a question that we shared with everybody before we did it. I don't recall. But I know we, everybody had a chance to share. I, we're not looking for a gotcha kind of moment or anything like that. It's just for us to get to know them. Do you have an idea?
What, when you plan to do this?
July.
July. Same time, a Thursday?
No, because there's another one. There's an O'Leary NPR, HPR.
I, I, I think it would be good to have a forum on another date than what conflicting with other, other programs.
Yeah, what I'm asking is, what do you envision would be a good forum? I mean, folks would come and listen. Yeah. I think presentation and then maybe Q and A? Anybody else? A presentation and then Q and A? Okay, so now let's talk about the Q and A before we just jump on that as an idea. What is a presentation? Tell me about yourself? Kiony, go ahead.
I'm just curious for when we're considering format and whatnot, how many are we, like, people are we gonna, are we looking to feature? Or is it just the, what is it called, competitive, the races where they're up against somebody, or those kind of basics?
That's a great question. Should we, should we look at races that have competitive features? And how high up do we go? Do we go US Senate? Do we go US House? How high do we, how high do we go? How many people do we bring in? Holly has an idea.
Can we bring a little bit of civility back into the political process and just invite them to come and talk story, introduce themselves? Two minutes, introduce yourself, anyone who's running and wishes to be known to the community. And then there's an opportunity to ask questions.
Anybody? So everybody gets a chance to do a two-minute presentation about themselves. We have a list of questions that are submitted beforehand to that person? Yeah, I think that when we talked about this the last time, we were worried about asking, having people, you know, for example, if you were running for office, a lot of the questions that went to you were from the people that were supporting your campaign. So they were lovely questions. Do you think, do you think maybe we should ask the community what those questions should be that are related directly to issues in Kanihohe? And then have them respond to those? Okay. What would be, what would be a good date? And what do you think would be the time constraint? Two, three hours? It's not, it's a candidate forum, which doesn't mean all of the board members have to sit here. It'd be great if you came. It would be even greater if the community came. Two hours. I think we need to figure out how many candidates there are, and who's running. Is, is, is that done? Is that done? Are all, have all the candidates turned in papers?
The filing is done, I believe.
Yes, filing date is done.
That's done. Okay. Let me do some homework and find out how many people that would be. And then I'll go with an email back out to the board and ask you how many, how many folks you want. If we have 30 people, it might be.
Too much.
Maybe. And we might need somebody to moderate.
Oh, absolutely.
He's pointing at Dylan. Dylan, you're going to moderate? Sure.
Were you thinking about having the forum here?
Oh, see, now that's a great question, because you would have to coordinate on something other than the night that we would normally do it. That's, that's a good question.
Yeah, so the first one is, if you're going to do it outside of your regular meeting day, we can't guarantee that someone from the Neighborhood Commission Office or the videographer, like Jordan, will be available that night, because we already have other schedules worked out. So if you deviate from that, you might be running it solo, but we can still work to maybe get this venue for you. And that would come at a cost. But if you were recessing your July meeting, then I don't really see a problem with that. We just got to know as soon as possible so we can talk to the school and make sure that it's available for whatever night you may choose. So yeah, let us know as soon as possible.
Any possible nights that you're thinking we might be able to do this? Saturday afternoon?
And you can do anything.
We could. Esther was just saying that there is a council, which only means a couple of people from our, Esther wouldn't be here. Maybe we could do something special with Esther.
Keep it on our regular meeting date. Uh huh. And just, and the city council members.
Right.
I think that would work the best to me.
Simpler.
Simpler.
What we're used to, we're already used to this, you know, coming here on the third Thursday. And folks that are in the community are used to the third Thursday. And even though we've recessed, you can still get this place? Same time?
It sounds like it. If you're sticking to the same time, place, I believe we have that contract worked out already.
Good.
So would that be a, coming here would be solely for candidates forum. You wouldn't have an agenda. That way, it wouldn't be sunshine law. And as you said, it wouldn't be like board members sitting up here. You would just have a moderator and maybe a timekeeper.
Correct.
And everyone else would be sitting in the public.
Correct.
I like that idea.
So let it be written.
Wait, what, what is that for, the third Thursday?
Is that the 18th?
Okay, be before the candidates go out, right? I guess. Yeah, that's good.
Okay, good. Thank you. It was great that, that the senator brought up the Aloha Harvest. As I was talking to Stacy Evanson, I don't know if you know the Evanson family, longtime Kanihoe residents. And I believe she's connected very closely with that. And when we started talking about emergency preparedness, what better way to know where the food is in our community? So if something happens, we know, one, how to take care of our kupuna, and two, how to feed ourselves. So I'm starting to like this initiative, and I'd like to see the emergency preparedness team connect with Stacy. There was a question two meetings ago about Pacific Wind. Donald, Donald, were you on that brief with me? Yes. The Pacific Wind, with the folks that were going to do the windmills, they were going to do it 12 miles out. Hadn't heard anything. And when we finally got it, there's some traction, but it's not traction that's going to happen overnight. They're talking about 2035 and 2038 for this to become. So they're taking their time. They're going very slowly. They're working with the community. They're, they're getting the proper buy-in with the proper stakeholders. They're going to probably come in August or September and give the board a brief. Finally, Board Committee reports and assignments. Are there any board committee reports to be made?
I did get a chance to visit the Kaohalais up on Keahala Road and behind the courthouse. It was, it was really interesting about their intake process. And it's full. They have, I think, 31 little rooms. So I got to see their setup and chat with the nurse that was there. So if anybody's interested with more, for more details, just see me after.
Thank you. Any other committee reports, Mr. Sakamoto?
Chair, on the transportation, I did attend the vision zero for the city. This is for crosswalks and pedestrian walkways to make sure that nobody gets in, in an accident with somebody with a vehicle. There is a report that came out, and they need feedback. So I'll be sharing that with the board, and you can share with others, or feedback about the vision zero plan.
An update on Haikus stairs. There's been a temporary injunction granted on removal. And there's going to be a hearing next week to see if that's going to be made permanent. Also, my husband's been walking with the dog in the back of the valley, because it's nice and cool back there. Growing homeless encampment, loads and loads of trash, mattresses, all kinds of stuff. Don't know how that's going to be fixed.
Kiony?
I just noticed my name next to Legislative Committee. I don't know why that's there, or when that went on there. Just wanted to flag that and have a conversation about why it was put there.
Are you not the chair, are you not the chair of the legis, State Legislative Affairs Committee?
No.
Okay. I thought you were. That was my fault. I was the one who put it.
No problem.
Any volunteers to serve on the State Legislative Committee? Okay, thank you. All right. Finally, our last announcements, our next regular board meeting is going to be Thursday, August 15, at 6:30 at Ben Parker Elementary School, or the login credentials that were used today, and a candidate forum in place of our July meeting that's going to take place on the third Thursday of July. Anybody have that off the top of their head? On the 18th. Oh, awesome. Thanks, everybody, for their time and their efforts and their desire to help Kanihoe move forward into the future. This meeting is adjourned.
Excuse me, on your forum in July, is it going to be online?
You'll be able to view it online.
Thank you. Live, like we're doing tonight?
It'll be, it'll be probably the same login that we have for this meeting.
Thank you.
We have to talk about that.